We can also amend the question.
There is well. We don't really have a spot.
You're good to go.
On the meeting order, please rise. My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, united in civil with liberty and justice for all. Approval board minutes for February 14th, 2024.
I'll move for the approval of board meeting minutes for February 14th, 2024.
Second.
And a motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval and meeting agenda.
I am going to move to amend the agenda to add to the consent agenda Retirement Supplemental List A. And then on top of that amendments to add to unfinished business, the amendment for request for travel approval for W two school minutes.
Can you make a note on your, just for Candace with the meeting minutes, that supplemental retiree list A would go under five consent agenda, B personnel, item two retirement.
Second that motion.
And a motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Consent agenda.
I'll move for the consent agenda.
A second.
And a motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, discussion items. Today we're going to do focus on kids elementary, Mr. Scruggins or AKA not Mr. Scruggins, Mrs. Moore.
Mr. Scruggins was out with a medical, a family medical issue. And I called Miss Moore yesterday. She's like, no, we got this. Are they ready? They're ready to go. So Miss Moore's just done an incredible job, so I'm ready.
Okay, there we go. Come on back, folks. All right, so here we have, why don't you stand over there. This is Isaiah Alvey, and this is Cameron Rowland, and they're here to present to the board about some things that are happening at the elementary school. And so we're going to talk a little bit about that. First of all, I want to mention that we're really excited. Things are going really well this year for us. We just got our I-ready results back and we've seen a huge jump in our reading stores. So that's been very exciting to see that. And so the things that they are going to describe that are happening in the classroom is a direct result of the great things that are happening and the great explosion. So we're going to go ahead and we're going to start with Cameron. And she has some things to share with you. So Cameron, can you tell us a little bit about what's happening in your classroom with Math four?
So during Math four, we work in our ready math books and do flouncy play on our computers, which helps us improve with our skills that we need to work on. And we practice with math worksheets also to improve our skills. And we have something called perfect practice, which is where there's seven or eight problems on a page. And Mrs. Hope, our teacher, will tell us to do three or two problems at once, and then we go to her and get them checked. And if they're right, then we get to move on with another few. If they're wrong, then we have to fix our mistakes and finish the page.
Yes, great job. Yes, so it sounds like if you get hung up on something, you guys go back and you redo it until you can get it and then you move forward. Is that what you're saying? Okay, great. Excellent. So there's something else that happens in the classroom called Math Explore. Can you tell us about Math Explore?
So each day, kind of kind of theme, today was Rewind Wednesday, and during Rewind Wednesday, we get to retake any tests that we don't have shown mastery on yet. And if we also have choice time, which is if we don't have anything mastered yet, we have to practice the skills that we need to master. And the little choice time tubs are like filled with task cards that we do on a whiteboard to help us improve our skills.
I know when I've been in those classrooms, they use a lot of different manipulatives and a lot of different tools to learn. And so that's exciting, even if, and I forgot to mention fifth grade, these are fifth graders. So great job, Cameron. I have one more question for you. Okay, so can you tell us something that you've really enjoyed about the school year so far?
I loved being part of ASB and helping out.
Is there any assembly particular that you enjoyed?
I actually really enjoyed the assembly today because I was able to get student of the month for all of the students.
Yes, yeah, it was exciting because I worked with Cameron in the morning, we talked, and then I look out there and there she is, student of the month too. So it's a big day for her. Thank you, Cameron, so much. All right, Mr. Isaiah. So Isaiah's going to tell us a little bit about what's happening in the classroom with ELA four.
Okay, so what are, so we have our little leader, a little reader in our CKLA activity workbook. They kind of go together. So right now we're reading on Don Quixote, The Adventure of Don Quixote, and we read a couple of chapters. Sometimes we work in groups, sometimes we work in by ourselves or as a class. And we read chapters and then we go into our CKL activity workbooks and then we answer the questions related to the chapters. And so, and also our teacher reads the chapter book aloud too.
Okay, so you're reading Don Quixote right now. Is there any passage or anything that's kind of stuck with you?
Um, so there was his puppet show, Don Quixote, and he thought they were insulting him. That he thought the puppets were alive and insulting him. So he got really mad and kind of raged on him and kind of like ruined the puppet show.
It's a bit, that's. So can you tell us a little bit about what's happening with ELA Explore?
Yes. So our main focus is working on our vocabulary. And we, so we go into this app, it's called Amplify Hub, and we work on our vocabulary there. And we also, um, we also work, we also practice our spelling words for our spelling test. We have every Friday. And sometimes, and we also read it independently, and then after we read, our teacher will ask us if we learned any vocabulary and then we tell them vocabulary and.
So I have one more question for you. So can you share something with us that you've really enjoyed so far this?
Uh, this is one thing, it's called Reader's Theater, and what we, what we did is we read a book and we made like a little display about our book and our main characters and all the setting and that. And then we dress up as the main character. And then the other ELA class from the other shift, Ms. Keating's class, they will come into our class and look at our book reports. And they like, yeah, and then we, after that, we'd go into their classroom and look at their book reports.
So it sounds like you do some cross collaboration with the different classes so you can see what's happening in different classrooms. Great. Thank you so much for sharing. You guys did a great job. Thank you very much.
Just want to compliment you both of being very well spoken and made it sound so well understood. So good job.
Thank you.
I just have one question real quick, Isaiah. You said that you guys, you read a book and then you put together a report and you dressed up?
No, no. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, what did you dress up as? What book did you read?
Uh, it was, it was about an alien coming from space, trying to take kids from Earth back to space with them. Uh, and so I dressed up as the alien.
So did you know ahead of time you were going to get to dress up as something crazy? So you.
Yeah, so I was.
Well, nice work.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Questions or comments or anything?
Let me share something I want Heather to see this. Eric, can I share my screen?
Yes.
Oh, you want me to stop straight? Shared this, but I want Heather to see it. So she's got parents and students here. I shared it last week. But I think it's just, I don't know, I'm not gonna, I'm not done celebrating it yet. This is our fifth grade scores. State assessment scores, 2015 at the top, last year's state assessment scores. Our students are fifth grade, right? So this would have been last year's fifth graders, but I want you to see how excited our students are. The blue dot is Alma, the dark line is the Washington state average. And you can see how the Washington state average fell during the pandemic. Notice fifth grade is below the state average. That top one is ELA 2015. Also over, that helped.
Yep.
2015 is Alma sixteen, seventeen, eighteen. You notice our high score is 2019, just before the pandemic. Right? We passed the state average and then everybody in the state kind of fell again. Look at this. Those students owning their learning has blown past the state average and was literally back to our best performance before the pandemic. And again, fifth grade, this is math, below the state average, 2019, we passed the state average. Twenty-one is a weird year. I should point it out here too, because that was when students tested in October. That's when the state test was taken in October, when students had just come back. Twenty-two last year and twenty-three, again, math, well beyond the state average, well outperforming. A question comes up, how are we doing? And again, we are, and I told this before, it showed all elementary, last year elementary outperformed the entire state in all grade levels, all subject areas. This is a great school. Whether you've been here for a while, Greg's been here for a while. I don't think, Mark's not here, but if he knows this, I don't think Greg can walk in my office right now. I mean, between the bad book initiative last year, you don't care about that next week, get last year eighty, fifteen percent of our kindergarteners who was standard to start the year last year, eighty-three percent of our kindergarteners is standard by the end of the year. Fifteen at the beginning of the year, eighty-three, the work our teachers have done, have shown us that we have one of the best elementary schools in the state of Washington objectively by the numbers. And I just want to tell you, you've done an incredible job and feel proud of you.
Hey. How about comment? Unfinished business, we have approval of policy twenty-four ten high school graduate.
I want to interject, our families, we're going to get to the really boring parts of the meeting too, so you're also totally free to go. You're also free to stay.
But if any of us were you.
Thank you guys for coming. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, then we're going to do approval of policy twenty-four ten high school graduation requirements, second and final reading.
I'll move for the approval of policy twenty-four ten high school graduation requirements, second and final reading. I'll second it.
It's been a motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approval of the softball booster fundraiser?
We're not seeing.
She's not, but you do, we'll go through that.
I don't see her in here. We're saying Kerry, Kerry Colber. Correct. I don't see, I haven't watched a random user. I could, we had questions from last time.
Yeah, last time I just went, we had a couple of questions.
Oh, question, youth game.
On the way.
Ron, do you know what the youth game night is? No, I wouldn't want to speak on that. That's fine. I could guess. Everything else is pretty straightforward. It's just, I don't know if that is.
You guys want to? You guys want to table it and see if they actually come online here and fill in anything?
Well, I'd like to try to give them an opportunity because they're getting really close to maybe to start.
I'm going to move so we can open discussion.
Say what?
Shouldn't I move and we can?
Yeah, we could, and then we could table it. Yeah.
No, I didn't mean to table it, but to do the discussion. Yep. Okay, I'll move for the approval of, I'll see, but the softball or the softball fundraiser. Sorry.
And there's been a motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
For me, I don't have an issue with any of the fundraisers other than not knowing what the youth game night actually consists of. So I would not, you know, and without a representative here, I would be willing to approve all the fundraisers except for that one at this time. And it looks like the earliest they would do that is March twenty-fifth. I think you'd have time in the next board meeting to do that. If we had a representative of what that is.
Just like, you come to the game night?
I, again, I don't. So they do that every year. Where the, the youth will come and run the bases with the team after the game and that sort of thing.
I don't know what the fundraisers.
I think you would be fine to.
Yeah, it doesn't say.
Ryan, are you saying you would like to amend the motion of approval by adding the note of tape of removing item six, youth game night from the, from the approval?
I would like to.
Thank you.
I just want to make one note and Ron, if you can just pass it on, that fifty fifty raffles, they can only have to make sure that they check that the gambling commission is. I live with everything else.
You need to, you can move to amend. I think you need a second.
So, Brian.
So just, I know where. So those dates line up with actual softball games, just so you're aware.
Right, I know the twenty-fifth, they're talking about recognizing the state championship team fourteen, but again, I don't know what that actually consists of and.
I don't remember softball doing that. I do remember that baseball started like two or three years ago where they started inviting the youth baseball on a game night. Where yes, they ran the bases with the big kids and did kind of an introduction before the game of teams or whatnot. So I would imagine it's probably going to be something like that.
And I'm just wondering, I mean, if they're not actually raising any funds for that night, is there really necessary, is it necessary for us to even have to prove that? I mean, if it's just a part of an activity at a game that is not generating any money for the booster club, is that something that we even have to approve? If that's what it is.
Yeah, we do.
Our insurance.
I was just going to say, we might have some sort of liability to make that discovery.
Could we, could we approve it based on that this is what we believe it to be, that if it was not that same event, then? But if it was not that same event, then do we need to bring that back?
I, I still feel more comfortable knowing exactly what it is.
That's right.
I think, um, if there's not a front in sales on it, then timeline, would you have a board meeting on three thirteen?
Yeah.
So we'll stick with the amendment of number six being set aside and the rest approved, is that still the, uh, motion?
Yes.
Okay, so with that said, is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Your amendment's carried.
Amendment carried.
Now you gotta vote on the motion.
It is a lot, this one, and this goes to this one, okay? So there's been a motion made and seconded, is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. So that, both.
Uh, new business, approval of PTA fundraiser. We need to do the amendment to the W S U travel.
Yes, we have the W S U travel, that would be the finish. Item C.
Yeah, thank you, I haven't been here.
Oh, did we place out his item C? Sorry, I didn't see it on there.
I have it here, and I was gonna say something, but I was trying to get this to the right sometime.
Yes, you know, I'll just add, I didn't see.
We are seeking an amendment to a previously approved, uh, agenda, I approve, traveler, approved, a previously approved travel request. Um, there was initially two traveler requests approved, one for the date of March seventh, and another date for March, I'm trying to remember, twenty fifth, I think. The March twenty fifth date was canceled by the Washington State University College of Medicine. We're seeking to amend the, uh, March seventh travel date by increasing, uh, the number of students in the capacity. Uh, so then that way, all the students, the students wouldn't lose the opportunity to attend. So we're, the, 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 the location, the travel location and logistics would stay the same, but what would increase is the number of students and the transportation costs.
Okay, I move to amend the original amendment to request for travel for WS School of Medicine to include the, the change, the changes that are listed in the request change listed here.
I'll second. And a motion to amend and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion fair, amendment carries, now I gotta go back and do a motion for it, yes?
To approve the original one, re-approve the original one?
I think we are fine.
I would do it.
I think you're okay.
You're fine, you're approving just the, the set of a motion amendment, just approving an amended form.
Great, carrying on. Approval of the PTA fundraiser.
Right there.
I wear my mom's shirt. The baseball.
Yeah, I like it.
Not basketball.
It's okay, it's baseball season, or well, soccer season, sorry. Cooper might disagree with you.
I, I make a motion for the approval of a PTA fundraiser.
I'll second.
There's been a motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Were you gonna speak on the fence screens, or would you like me to?
Katie said you were, but if you want me.
I just wanted.
No, I was hoping that you would, cause I know, uh, a little bit, but I think you know more than I do.
I didn't want to steal your thunder.
No, I don't, I'm actually out of basketball, so I'm trying to look through the thunder right now, I'm trying to figure out what's going on. Definitely.
Um, PTA with their fundraiser this year is seeking to have the fence screens, so like those plastic fence, and a royal blue that says Alma Eagles across the front. She has requested, she, um, I, I know, um, our PTA president, um, Kate Colette did request to have a then, a, a render made, but the render, she didn't get the render back, she just got the written description. Um, but I think it would be a great, uh, definitely a pride thing, I think we'd endorse it, it would bring a lot of royal blue onto the elementary campus. Um, and they were pretty cognizant too, by actually meeting with the, um, the mayor and the police chief to see how, um, it would obstruct view through the fence for parents leaving the parking lot, and to make sure that that fence screen did not surpass that line. So she does have, she's, does have close connections with the mayor.
Okay, so we're seeking approval of the PTA donation of fence screens.
Yes.
I will move for the approval of PTA donation of fence screens.
Second.
And a motion made and seconded, is there any further discussion?
The, as far as the, uh, maintenance of it, you know, is that gonna just fall in the, because it says durability of seven to ten years and.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll be taking on the obligation of the maintenance, I think the biggest issue is gonna be the ability to pressure wash it, I think the the understanding is, is that the, the white alma shouldn't be washing off as we wash it off, so.
And it's a, a price, I don't, um, that we could probably in seven years as a PTA bring it back. I know our fundraiser, um, is the only one we do all year long, but the last few years we've put in, um, the walking path and the, the actual like material. And so, um, this would be something that would one hundred percent just be able to be repurchased, even if we needed to, um, in the next ten years, five to ten years. And not that it will, but we can. It's exciting, we're really excited.
I do think, what I like about it though, and Jeff, this is, Jeff Monroe's, our facility director's credit to him, office, uh, when speaking, um, speaking to Katie, she goes, we just love what happened with the front of the middle school and the high school, and how it really just brought a lot of pride to the community and their way that PTA can support bringing that same level of pride to the, um, to the elementary school. And I think that's just something I got excited about, so Jeff, you had launched an inspiration.
Pride and safety, because I know a lot of the times too, that whole fence is open, and anybody at any time can drive by eighty times a day looking at our kids playing on the playground, and so I think that's kind of our idea too, is pride and safety.
That's great.
Yeah, and we got to see Oakville do it, so it looks good.
Okay, is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Yes.
Oh, sweet.
Hi. But I made it. Another formal procedure, so direct me.
No, we're gonna just ask you questions once we figure out how to ask it.
So I'm gonna simply be able to.
Here's. I move to amend the approval of the softball booster fundraiser.
I'll second that.
We took this back to discussion.
Yep. I just gotta, just gotta write that down again. Okay, so there has been an amendment, motion made to make an amendment, uh, that wasn't Stephanie that seconded, right, I knew Jamie. And that amendment, we may, just so you know, we, Ryan had a question, and we want to approve everything, and we'd one thing out until we have a certification. So we're gonna go back and then open it back up, so we can actually, so there's, that is where we are right now.
So on the, uh, youth, what is that, the youth game night?
Game night, yeah.
Yeah, the youth game night, number six, what is that actually consisting of?
This is where we invite the little league team to come and watch, and they get shirts and like get a B, have cheering on the high school. So I just do like inviting them for the night, I think baseball does the same thing, it's just their night to be kind of recognized and be, they're our biggest fans, we'll make signs with them and like, just invite them to become future high school players.
Yeah, I, I just didn't recall this, the softball doing that in the past, so I didn't know exactly what that was.
We're doing some cool stuff now, so. Same with camp, new stuff.
That's what we thought was the situation, but we weren't sure, and that's why I was like, well, I don't want to prove something that we don't know exactly what.
Right, and we, the fundraiser part of that, honestly, we won't be making any money, other than what would happen at the game.
Yes, that was the other question I had.
Awesome.
Yeah.
So, we can get that, or we can start over?
It's pretty.
You just vote on it and vote it down, and then, anyone?
Yeah.
You guys understand?
Yep. So there's been an amendment, not a motion, an amendment, and that amendment was opposed by Michael and seconded by Jamie.
I, I'm, I'm proposing that you guys decline my amendment, because I did not actually add the correct amendment, because what we need to do is go back and add the amendment, um, stating that we're going to bring back, uh, number six on the youth game night to the original. So I implore you guys to vote this amendment down.
Well, I'm gonna be imploring. Hey, is there any further discussion on that, on the matter?
All in favor? Opposed?
Aye.
Nay?
Okay, let's start over.
Amendment fails.
I, I move to amend the softball request to add the number six youth game night back.
I'll second.
Okay. So we have an amendment to re-add number six, and it has been seconded. Is there any discussion?
Sorry.
We'll get this.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Amendment carries. Okay, do we have to go back and re, read?
So Carrie, go forth and do your.
You missed the amendment from the first one.
Well.
Yeah.
I think this is a great exercise in part of the program.
I was just so impressed with your word choice, this is your eighth grade English teacher, I think, that is very, very, yeah, yeah, let's just set that aside this for a second. But I'm gonna take credit for that amazing word choice that we worked on.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thanks for making time for squeezing me back in. Absolutely. To go to, so thank you. Yeah. Okay, approval of educational consultant contract for Mary Roberts for twenty three, twenty four year.
Um, this is kind of just in an expansion of some exciting work that has happened. We are now, we just got a contract, I was gonna say, I don't want to blow superintendent's report, but great new partnership at Gray's River College, through our limitless grant, great new partnership in our, um, uh, H two P, which is high school to post-secondary, but it's kind of created a backend project where we have a few projects we need to get completed, and Madison Grants kind of support it. So we're looking to just have a contract to have Mary come in and kind of close out some of these projects that we are trying to get completed this brand.
I'll move for the approval of educational consultant contract for Mary Roberts for twenty three, twenty four school year.
I'll second that.
And a motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, enrollment, Mr. Asmat.
Uh, well, the month of February kind of took us down a little bit by about nine F T E, uh, but we're still, so for about fifteen hundred and sixty-four F T E is still our running average, fifteen forty-eight for the month of February. Um, that is inclusive of our A O E numbers, our, um, our, uh, running start numbers have continued to grow into winter months, from about fifty students up to about fifty-five. Um, and again, I think, uh, students having a lot of university options though, I think is bringing a lot of students into our programs. And our open doors, just our open doors enrollment number. There it is, our open doors enrollment numbers, they're kind of sitting a little consistent, it's grown up to about fifty-six. Uh, when you add in the running start numbers and the open doors numbers, we're sitting about six, and transitional kindergarten, about sixteen hundred and eighty-one students enrolled in our district. We are becoming the very clear second largest district in the county. Do agree, Mr. Carter?
Two point.
Slow down.
Slow down. Any questions?
Okay, yes, Arnold, special report.
You guys should have all the numbers of the report, um, our current balance right now is running about almost three point four million. We're on track to end the year, probably close to between four and five. Are there any questions on the reports?
I just saw some red, some red this month, so.
Say that again?
I just saw some red numbers, so this month.
That's just that we're not, we haven't caught up proportionately wise on what we've expended, because we've been running on budget, now we're catching up. So in February's report, you might see those a little lower.
Yeah, it's the same where we pop them, they don't even from, uh, ending front to the balance, but reading that right.
Yeah.
It sounds like we're gonna get caught up, and it's gonna go back.
Yeah. Open. And I know that's kind of out of the financial, but it's kind of in the budget, I already, you and Verna Deck coming next Friday, is it next Friday? What Friday?
I can do.
What, I just need to know, so I'm ready.
Yeah, no, I was gonna ask the same question, it's in the budget report realm, because that's what we're doing, is checking the budget, so.
The eighth?
The eighth, whatever, you guys can come, I'll be ready for you.
Oh, that's this Friday.
So, uh, we do have, uh, the, uh, the. Learning walk on Friday, still?
Yes, actually, that was in Mr. Superintendent's report.
So we do have a learning walk, so we will potentially be on district, so. But this Friday, yeah, the first, with the first work, is that too soon?
No.
No, because, oh yeah, no, sorry.
Any of them work.
Okay.
So you guys just let me know, so I'm awake.
This Friday we have a new one?
But, yeah.
Why did I?
I was the only one that did it last.
Oh, I'm, okay. I'm putting everything on the eighth for someone, okay. And that's at nine, yeah. The learning walk.
Yes.
Yeah. So we can just start early, like we plan on doing that time before, I think, right?
Yeah.
It's okay, we can go eight, that, just, whatever you want to go.
I'm trying to, to do too much on that day, um, yeah.
We're late.
We can go, we can go earlier. I'd rather do it all in one day than, than have to spread it out, Friday is my free day, I schedule everything that day. Okay, uh, seven o'clock, seven thirty?
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock?
What, what'd you say?
Seven o'clock?
Okay. All right, cool.
Okay, March first, seven AM.
Budget watch is on.
Budget watch, got it, locked and loaded.
Thank you. Thank you, Lisa.
Yes. Okay, if there's no, uh, further comments or questions for Lisa, then we'll move on to superintendent report.
Um, well, first and foremost was setting the, uh, learning walks, so which board members were interested in doing the learning walks, and where did you want to go?
I'm held this Friday.
Uh, I haven't been to the high school yet.
Yeah, good, wherever, I've been to all three now, so rotating back around would be nice, eventually I do want to see the badge books.
Well, that's the next board presentation.
Okay, so, well, you're spot on, Chris, we're good.
And I, and I do want to comment, I did a ten month slot Friday with, uh, Mr. Keating and.
How'd that go?
Went well, I got to see kindergarten, second, and fourth grade, and so even the, the badge books, we have heard about that, but like the badge bins, um, that was interesting concept, and, and I just saw the challenges that were having kids at that age that are all at different levels, and, you know, but I thought that it's the kindergarten teacher that I watch, but the different individual group was very invincible to all students and, uh, across the board on all.
Very enviable to all students and across the board on all levels.
It's impressive to see, um, I've been really, really impressed with our kindergarten team on how you have all these students with this variety of abilities and they've met where they're at. And they can, the students, the badge bins, they can go over and wrap what they need. We're, we're priming the funk for your presentation, right, Jennifer, since you're presenting uh.
Yes.
Presenting with Greg in two weeks, alright, so I don't want to steal too much of your thunder, but we have a whole early learning pre-K badge book getting ready to be released. So that's great news.
Setting stuff.
Um, Stephanie, were you, wanted to go for Friday?
Um, I could do Friday, but, because nobody, are you not going?
I'm going.
And you're not going for it?
I'm going.
Yeah, only two of us can go, right?
Yeah, but I, Mark and I split up.
Yeah. You can go someone else.
You're just gonna be able to go to the high school, if you wanted to go to the high school, I could have you go to the middle school again.
I don't have to go to the high school if you want.
Can I move back with you?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, you can also, if you'd like, I could have you go with Mark and you can just like. Correct it with Mark as well.
Okay, I'll circle back with you.
If, whatever you want to do, I can, if you want to go to the high school, I can switch out and go with Mark somewhat.
Okay.
Just.
That's true, because you said that you would like to see the.
I, I would, I mean, I, again, I have seen them, but there was areas that we didn't go to, so only so much time.
Okay, I'll, I'll follow up with you.
I appreciate it. So, yeah, anyway, so that's the first one, um, the next great big news that we got, though, is we just concluded a contract and Mr. Keating will be at Grace Harbor College tomorrow meeting. On running a pilot, um, which is a direct admission, so students who graduate high school from Elma High School will be directly enrolled into Grace Harbor College. And that completely and totally eliminates the college admissions process. Now, it doesn't mean that they are, so I should say admitted admissions process, not enrolled. They will still need to enroll in classes, but when we think about college, there's like going to pursue a post-secondary education, there's a lot of steps. And our thought what, and, and, and our thought was is instead of having all of these structures in place to teach students to get through the steps. It could just be easier to just eliminate the steps. So there's no bill, there's no fee associated with it, students are not gonna get a fine, we're not moving you there, but what happens is, is. When you graduate from Elma, you're through the admissions process. And then students wishing to move on would just need to begin picking out their classes, signing up for their classes, and then making sure their FAFSA is connected to their admissions. Removing the applying for college process. So we think that's just a big step in our ability to remove barriers to students and help them pursue more education, and I just think. I know Mark and Christie have been working on that, and they've just done an incredible job, so to have the contract in place signed. And this is only right now, only Elma and Grace Harbor College, we are setting the model and the pilot for the rest of Grace Harbor Company.
Okay, because I'm gonna just kind of play devil's advocate.
Sure.
A little bit, um, by doing that, are we taking some response, I mean, we're making it too easy for kids to. And I mean, to take out that process of actually having to apply. To get in to college, it's not a, a hard thing to do, I'm just.
It's not hard, but it's innate, but it gives us the ability to focus, because a lot of students don't really struggle with the college application. But generally, what happens is, is you have a college turnaround, you apply, you have to fill out the application, you have to submit it. You write your check, and then the college spends the next few weeks processing that, that, that application form, that admissions form. And then you have to move into the enrollment process. Now, the application process, I don't think is the, 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 the end-all be-all that our students need support with. Or I think our students need support is in the actual enrollment process, what class do I take, how do I sign up for this class, how do I do my financial aid? The barrier we're trying to get around is that multi-week process of having that college application being submitted and processed. And by eliminating that time window, we can actually provide the support for the students right at the area in which they would need the support.
And I think that it works kind of like what Chris is saying, like. Correct me if I'm wrong, but it's kind of like to get ten minutes with, with, you get a three-point or better, you're in, you, you've kind of hit those requirements, now you're in. So it's not like kicking down the border, you're like, anybody, you know, is out your.
Yeah, I'm just making, I'm, I'm just thinking that if we make it too easy and we have all these things already done for them, that when they actually do get out to the real world. That they're not even gonna know how to fill out an application to apply themselves.
We want to make it so our, our support is where it's gonna have the biggest um impact. Because it's not the, I mean, the application and applying for colleges isn't where a lot of colleges lose students, in fact, actually, if you look at the college. In, in admissions data compared to the data of students who show up day one, it's quite the gap. So to say that we're trying to solve a problem in college admissions would probably be misdirecting, what we're trying to do is we're trying to eliminate that application. Turnaround time, so we can provide support, because where most colleges lose students, most post-secondary institutions lose students is by the time it's, it's time to sign up for classes. Students know, don't know how to pick a major, identify a major, how to make sure you're taking the right coursework, and as a result, you load up on all these uh student loans that you can't use. How to apply for a FAFSA, how to apply your, because you can't. You can apply for your FAFSA and now it's December, but unless you're connected to a post-secondary institution, that FAFSA grant, that Pell Grant won't be applied. Um, so it's how to get admitted, how to get enrolled and apply that Pell Grant. So that creates a pretty big washout rate of students from the college application process, and just filling out the application and submitting it to where the real rift is. So if we can remove the application, which is not the complicated part, but it's the time associated with it until the college has processed that application. Because now the way we can do it is we can just do exactly the same thing with guaranteed admissions. Students just indicate they want to go, and then that application is submitted via data sharing agreement. So then that way, all of the stuff the college needs is just immediately transferred electronically. We can, they can just on electronically be immediately admitted, so now we can begin providing the support in the area in which the student will need support. And I think that's where that higher level executive functioning skill comes in, is how do I pick out a class, do I even need this class, what do I want to do, is this the right place for me?
Who is providing that support, I know you say we, but I mean, who specifically is that, our counselors, do we have a specific?
Well, we're transitioning, because that's what's been provided in iConnect, we still have an iConnect program, but now we're moving to providing that support in our Eagle Time program. So the Eagle Time program is gonna be providing that support.
So you just have it out there.
That's right.
But when it. When, it seems like kids would be enrolling for classes. Outside of June. Like, I, I, I feel like if you're a senior, you would not be enrolling for classes at the college for fall quarter. While the supports were there, it would be post-June.
No, they would be enrolling with the, the colleges do, which is generally should be, I think, when we were met with the college, and Mark will have better answers on it, because he meets tomorrow to start shoring up the details. Would be in.
Like May or something?
Spring.
Okay, I didn't know if they're, if not, I would say it'd be nice to be able to have some sort of. You know, opportunity to have students come back and have.
No, I think it'd be, they'd be register picking up those classes before they're gone.
I kind of wonder if it allows them to pick classes sooner than everybody else.
Yeah, that's what you were saying.
Right, you're getting in sooner, because I just remember when I was at WSU, like, you know, by the time you got through the, the process, right, the sophomores and juniors already have. You know, take of the classes, right, before you can even get admitted into college, so.
Right.
Alright, cool.
So it's, yeah, Mark's having the final meeting, we have the contract signed, so now it moves into the. The what logistically now, how can we build this out? And I think the big thing is, is don't let the perfect be the enemy of the good, we're gonna, now that we can actually remove these barriers, start building that support, knowing what kind of support we can provide the students is gonna be of the next challenge. So I think those would be um reasons not to do it, those are the things that now how to be sure this up and make sure that it's become a great experience for students. And we're also not saying all students will go, I just wanted to be clear on this.
Right.
Um, yeah, I think that's what I have for my report, because we're between seasons right now. I mean, we did have a great start, I mean, a cold start for all of our spring sports.
A wet one, sure. Okay, uh. Ms. Mia. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Good, thank you. You've been a long time.
It has, what's new with you?
Nothing much, I was just focusing on my schoolwork, because like I'll be here. So that's what I've been doing, and I, like, the last time I came here, I think I was still working. But I still haven't contacted none of the principal or anything.
Okay.
So I think I'll start doing that again.
Okay.
And that's about it.
Okay. Okay, well, it's uh responsible for you to focus on the grades for sure. Okay, we are gonna go ahead and move into executive session for our thirty minutes, we're gonna review the performance of the public employee, there will be no action.
We will go in at. Since fifteen, come out at second point.
And this, I'm so sorry.
You're gonna be doing part of the executive session for our five hours, so no, Eric, don't make me go.
Alright.
Alright. Hi. Can you hear me?
I make a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
I second that motion.
And a motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries. Being adjourned.